Good morning and welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for October 5th, 2017. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. At this time, we would also like to ask if you have a cellphone or other electronic device that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. At the start of the meeting here, I'd also like to recognize a few new faces we have here. Over with the staff, we have Ken Young, the new Planning Director here for the City of Rapid City. Welcome, Ken. And up on the dais here, we've got two new faces as well. We have Justin Van Greshpi, alternate number one, and Vince Fidal, alternate number two. Both will be voting today, as we have some other commissioners not present. Welcome, all three of you. Good to have some new blood. Items one through seven have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the City Council. The City Council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. I have item 20 listed on here. Item six. Okay, item six is... Sorry. Item number six, 17 UR 021. The Rapid City Planning Commission's item on this item is final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through seven that staff would like removed?
Number six, please.
Are there any items one through seven that planning commission would like removed? Number three. And are there any items one through seven that the audience would like removed for separate consideration? Seeing no other items, the chair would look for a motion to approve items one, two, four, five, and seven in accordance with staff's recommendations. Karen made the motion and Rachel seconded that motion to approve those items per staff recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to recuse myself from this vote and that's the only thing that I need to say at this point.
Okay. Galen made the motion to approve item number three per staff recommendations. Mike seconded that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Item number six is 17 UR 021, a conditional use permit to allow an oversized garage. Takes you through some photos. Property is owned low-density residential district as are properties surrounding it. There's an existing single-family dwelling with an attached garage currently located on the property. Property is approximately 1.14 acres in size. Future land use is low-density neighborhood. And you can see where it's situated in the city with Catron Boulevard and Mount Rushmore Road being identified as principal arterial streets. Here we have the site plan identifying what the applicant is proposing. A 40-foot-by-40-foot detached garage for a total of 1,600 square feet. The reason we pulled this item from the consent agenda is because before you on the dais is an email from one of the neighbors. And their concern is that after having spoken with the applicant, that they would prefer that the detached garage was not provided water and sewer service. Talking to the applicant this morning, he's indicated that he's not planning on extending water and sewer service to the proposed detached garage. I don't know if you want to add it as a stipulation of approval. We haven't done that in the past with doing that. And so staff's recommendation is to approve with the stipulations noted in the staff report. The applicant is here to answer any questions. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Vicki.
Just as a reminder, one of the stipulations of approval eliminates the use of the garage for any commercial purposes or as a second residence. The applicant has indicated that this is going to be a workshop. And I believe that he does want to have the ability to put water and sewer in there if it does meet with his needs in the future. That is something that we've done in the past based on the limitations of use and certainly something that I think that he would like to speak to today.
Thank you. Mike, do you have questions for staff?
And that was really my question. It's already kind of protected in that we don't allow that. So the necessity to not have... And I would see the need for water if I had a garage that size and I wanted to do some work on a vehicle or wanted to do... I could see the need for that. So I guess I don't understand the need to have it where that restriction is put on. So that would be my comment.
And I do have a speaker request on this item from Don Blada. I hope I got the name right. If you'd like to speak to it, please come up to the microphone. If you could identify yourself by name and address, just so we have it for the records.
Good morning, Rapid City Planning Commission, whatever you are called today. My name is Don Blada, and this is my wife, Kyle Blada. We live next door to the Hams. And first of all, to start with, we appreciate the Ham family. We enjoy working with them next door, and we enjoy their daughters very much. As you all know, as we live next door, we live in a wonderful area of the city, Enchanted Hills. If you keep that in mind, we'd like you all to realize that Enchanted Hills is a premier, wonderful location to live and to bring up from kids and families. What we'd like to share with you is that we do have concerns about this large, oversized garage or shop that Jesse has called it. In our neighborhood, there is no other such building of this size. And the reason we're bringing it forward is because this is kind of an obstacle out our back deck. And if you have a building of that size, depending on the height of this building, which we're not sure of yet, we'd like that explained to us also. We know that in the local area where we live, there are other single-car garages or shops that have been built in the past. My wife, Kyle, here, we originated up there back in the 80s and built our home with several other homeowners. All I can say is on behalf of the Enchanted Hills homeowners, I would like to express my concern that they, as homeowners in the local area there, not only next door to us as other members of the community are here today, I would like to share that I think they should be involved in such a decision. And I'd like to leave that at your hands. Kyle.
One of our concerns would be, is there going to be some kind of a... A wall or a drainage plan beside their driveway? We are on a hill down to their place, and is there going to be some erosion because of a driveway and the access to the project? We need to retain the soil in our area. And the drain, yeah. We don't know how far this building is from our drain field. We're all septic tanks up there, so we don't want to have to have a problem with that. Anyway, there are some questions that just have not been addressed. And I know that our homeowners from Enchanted Hills has an architectural committee that does review these plans, and they have not reviewed this yet. It should have been done before it came to the planning committee, but it was not yet. I think that's all of our concerns right now, but it is way oversized for the development.
Thank you for your input. I guess to follow up on that, is there an elevation on this item, Fletcher?
And there's a shot of the existing single-family dwelling with the attached garage. And the proposed detached garage will be behind the house, which is supported by the comprehensive plan. I'll get back to this elevation. And the maximum height for accessory structures is 15 feet. I know that was another question.
That's measured to the center of the roof pitch?
Basically, measuring from the end to the peak, about halfway point. And then from that height, 15 feet.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to know about the drainage issue that Kyle had brought up. If Public Works wants to answer that, or staff?
Thank you. We looked at this. It's actually a small... The developed area on the lot, it's a large lot. The impervious area is pretty small relative to the size of the lot. There's plenty of impervious area or pervious area that will alleviate the drainage issues. We looked at it. We did not see a problem with it based on the location, the size of the structures, the improvements, street improvements and such. And this is, I believe, downhill from the neighbors. They are kind of in their own little hole where their drainage should not adversely affect anybody else. And just be that roof drains, they run onto grassed area. There's a substantial separation from this building, the house, and the street. We did not foresee any issues with drainage.
Thank you. I have one follow-up request. If Jesse has anything that he would like to say before we make our decision, that would be welcome, I guess.
Good morning. I just wanted to let you guys know that...
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jesse Hamm, proposed builder in this process, owner of the property 1357 Panorama Circle. I was just reading through some of the concerns. And I had kind of reached out to each neighbor and tried to speak to these. And I'm not in the capacity of some of you folks that are trained in that realm. But the drainage concern that I had was making sure that the water runoff was sufficient to make sure that it didn't go toward my house. That was my only real concern because uphill from me where the Bladas live, there's no runoff issue with this property. As far as the... It was mentioned that the size of detached garages or shops like this had only been one car. There are multiple different two-car shops that are very similar in size. Mine is a little deeper, and the reason I'm making mine deeper is because I want to be able to park my truck in there and then work in the front of it. So that's the only real variation from my shop and others that have been built in this fashion with a proposal much like mine. The heights and compliance, I have an architectural plan that I put through. And it was my understanding that would make sense to me that I would approve it through the city and then go through the homeowners association. And I'll be compliant with the homeowners association requirements as well. So that's all I've got. If that makes sense. Thank you.
Mike Kwasny.
I don't know that we addressed the septic. That also was brought up as a question, whether or not that was in any way interfered with. So was that addressed, or...?
Yes, there is onsite septic. It is in compliance. This does not add bedrooms to the property based on the bedroom. The septic size is based on the bedroom. This does not add bedrooms. So it doesn't affect the sizing of the septic. There has been substantial upgrades to the septic. And I guess I'd let Jesse explain that, but they have done substantial work out there to change the septic, to improve it. I'm not sure what drove that. I guess some of the expansion on their house previously made them enlarge that, but their septic system is in compliance with regulations and fully functioning.
And in no way, this garage will interfere with any of the workings of the septic system?
No, they're separate. It's quite a ways back from their drain fields, their septic tanks. They showed that on their site plan. We did look at that. Our onsite wastewater technician reviewed that, so it has been looked at. And it does not affect the septic system or encroach into the septic system or the neighbors.
Okay, thanks.
Vince?
Thank you. Is there a specific reason for the height?
Mr. Chair, Vince, just to make sure I'm understanding you. Are you asking, is there a specific reason for the limitation of height or for his proposed height?
For his proposed height.
Maybe we can get Jesse to speak to that.
The proposed height is just, it meets the regulation of the city's code. He said that 15 feet was the maximum. I didn't achieve or exceed the maximum. That was what he was referencing. The height is just a 10-foot load-bearing wall. And I followed the roof line of the existing structure, so that's why the height.
Was there any intention to put like RV storage or anything like that there in the future?
No, I'll put a storage eight-foot-tall door so I could park a taller truck or a small trailer if I needed to, but other than that, no.
Thank you, Jesse.
Yeah, my pleasure.
I don't have any more lights up. Are there any further questions that the commission has? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion on this item. Galen made the motion to approve per staff recommendations. Is there a second? Karen seconded that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. That puts us to item number eight.
Item number eight is a final plan development overlay to allow residential development. It's 17 PD 045. We saw an initial plan development back in March to allow the residential development. There were quite a few exceptions that were granted to reduce the minimum lot size from 6,500 square feet to 4,922 square feet, to increase the lot coverage from 30% to 37%, to reduce the minimum lot width from 50 feet to 46 feet, and to reduce the minimum required side yard setbacks from eight feet to four feet. And this was all contingent upon the applicant fire sprinkler protecting the structures as well as signing an agreement to provide a community park. The final plan development revises the exceptions. They are still requesting the small lot size to 4,922 square feet and the reduced lot width from 50 to 46 feet. However, they are proposing to comply with the 30% lot coverage and the minimum required eight-foot side yard setbacks. This is in the Johnson Ranch development. The lots have been platted already, and the road is currently under construction. We previously saw a preschool approved on this property to the north. And this is a second or Phase 1B of a multi-phase development. Currently undeveloped, but you can see there's single family to the west and to the south. And there'll be a preschool to the north. Future land use is low-density neighborhood. And South Valley Drive is identified as a collector's street on the city's major street plan. Here we have one of the revised building footprints showing the eight-foot side yard setbacks. This one's a corner lot, so it's showing the 25-foot side yard setback that abuts a street, South Valley Drive. One of the interior lots showing eight-foot side yard setbacks. And again, one of the corner lots and interior. And some elevations of the proposed dwellings which will be constructed on these properties. The master plan showing future phases of development. And in this area is the community park, which is proposed. Here we are looking east into the proposed single-family dwelling development. The road is being constructed, looking south along South Valley Drive and to the north. That's looking at that preschool property, which will be located north of this development. And then looking at the established neighborhood that's south of this proposed development. And looking directly across the street at the single-family existing. So the stipulations of approval, the fire sprinkler protection was required by the fire department based on the minimum separation being reduced below 16 feet. Now that the applicant is proposing to meet the side yard setbacks, we can't require the fire sprinkler protection anymore. However, they do have the small lot size and reduced lot frontages, but the applicant is now proposing to meet that lot coverage and side yard setbacks. Staff is recommending that the stipulations be approved, removing the requirement to fire sprinkler protect, but that the applicant enter into an agreement with the city for the timing to create the community park prior to the submittal of any development application or permits for future phases. This will ensure that before we move on with Johnson Ranch that that park is established so that we do have that in writing. And then there is one revision, and it should be on the dais before you, to stipulation number three where it said that the minimum required eight-foot side yard setback or 12-foot for a two-story structure be provided. Any decrease in the minimum required side yard setback shall require the review and approval of a major amendment to the plan development. We would like to revise that to say instead, an amendment to the plan development in compliance with Chapter 175050G of the Rapid City Municipal Code. With that, staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved with the revised stipulation. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Mike Kwasny.
The lot sizes, are there any lots in our community that are similar to this to have a visual of what it will look like?
Mr. Chair, we did one similar to this, maybe even a little more extreme. It's known as Caitlin Subdivision up on Haynes Avenue, north of Country Road. And there, they were trying to bring in homes at a cost that would meet a market need. And in doing so, we did reduce setbacks and we did allow for smaller lots. The things that we looked off as trade-off on this is, are there parks within the area? In that particular one, there's the Vicki Power Park. And we looked at whether or not on-street parking for the guests of those that reside there was still being maintained with the number of driveway approaches. And we looked at that again with this application, noting that there weren't any community parks. The developer was great to work with on identifying that he could provide one within this development. Initially, we thought it would come as a part of Phase 1, but he's not going to build a street just to serve the park, and that makes sense. So our compromise was, as this came into the final plan development application, we would change the timing of the community park so that he could finish Phase 1. But before he proceeds with Phase 2, while he's constructing the streets to Phase 2, he would be constructing the streets to the community park as well. We looked at the parking in the street to ensure that even though they're providing the two off-street parking spaces per lot, that there was still room for guest parking in the street, and that is also being met.
Thanks, Vicki. Follow-up?
Yes. Well, my compliments to... We've worked real hard in Rapid to try to find affordable housing. And I think this is a good avenue to approach. Obviously, the concern as we get smaller lots is what does it look like? And the parking you address there. And I think it's great that they include a park because that is in our planning, our long-term planning. Anytime they make a development is to have parks, take care of our kids, and be able to have a spot for them to go and play safely. So I think they're working within the city, and I appreciate what the design, what they've come up with, so.
Yeah, if I... Excuse me. If I remember right, we looked at this plan development before, and we had a lot of discussion on the South Valley Drive improvements that are required as part of this being on a collector road. How is that being addressed?
Mr. Chair, John Roberts might have something to share on that, too. That was a request that did actually go before the council. And their decision was that this project would not require any additional improvements along South Valley Drive. It was an established street. It wasn't one that was being created as a part of this development and that it would not require improvements. Is that kind of sort of a summation of the discussion?
John, maybe a little color?
Thank you very much. Yes, Vicki, that is spot-on. I mean, you know, what was being asked for originally? They wanted to have three lanes put in, which became problematic with the bridge to the south of there. They wanted to change the drainage, you know, they wanted... The city was asking for quite a bit of stuff on a road that was already existing that would, according to their traffic counts, would serve the subdivision as is. So we, as a council, gave them variances on that. We allowed them to build. And it looks like it's a good project coming forward. We helped keep down some of that cost because, like Mike said, we're working hard on, you know, affordable housing. And that's one of the things that we have to look at on the city council, these costs that are going into this and be able to hold those costs down for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Kurt, so, you know, if the city ever determines that South Valley Drive needs to be improved, will that be a city expense then? will that be a city expense then?
Mr. Chair?
Vicki.
The short answer is yes. I'm not sure how that would come about if, certainly it would come from the taxpayers at some point, but I don't assume that this would ever be an assessment project that would go to the adjacent property owners. It would be a part of a city project that would come in and probably out of our CIP.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel?
You know, I kind of want to echo what Mike said. Any efforts that we put towards making housing affordable is something that I really am excited to see. I just, I had just a quick question for Vicki. The park that is in Phase 2 that we are requiring as part of the stipulations here, because it's a final planned development, they would have to talk to us before they change that. That's not something that they can come in later and put something, not that they would, but just as a precaution.
Mr. Chair? Yes, and you'll see the way that Fletcher worded the stipulations of approval. The exceptions to the lot width and the lot size are contingent upon the community park being constructed as a part of Phase 2. There will be coordination between the developer and the city's Parks Department to the design and final elements of that. So we look forward to coordinating those discussions as well and seeing what that project final looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Kwasny.
Guess the last thing that was talked about was the fire, and I guess I'd just like to make sure that the fire department, you're all on board and everything looks good to you and...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Tim.
Thank you for that question. I do appreciate that. I am concerned with the fact that we are not, we're no longer providing residential fire sprinkler protection in these. However, it does comply with all of the criteria as designed and as laid out in this instance. Fire sprinkler protection is incredibly important in today's residential environment, and I think it's even more important in our affordable housing group because we are typically the affordable housing serves a market which is a little bit higher risk than others because of young families, maybe older adults, maybe some disability implemented into that. But in this particular case, to the long and the short, without getting on my soapbox, it does meet the criteria at this point, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicki.
One of the reasons why Fletcher revised the stipulation that said that any decrease in the setbacks would require an amendment to the plan development in compliance with Chapter 17 is that there's a provision within our ordinance that says the director has the authority to sign off on some minimal amendments, some minimal changes. If a builder should come in and want to encroach into that eight-foot setback or 12-foot for two-story, we'd look to see, is the adjacent house already there? Are we sure exactly what that separation's going to be at the end of the day? And it may trigger discussions lot by lot as to whether or not fire suppression should be implemented on some of these homes. So, Tim, hold tight, you might get summoned at the end of the day.
Thanks, Vicki. Further questions or comments on this item? I've got no other speaker requests or lights up.
I make a motion to approve this item, number eight, with the stipulations including the revised stipulation three.
Karen made the motion to approve, as she said, I missed who seconded. Mike Kwasny seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries with Kurt voting no. Item number nine.
Item number nine is 17PD046, a final plan development overlay to allow an oversized garage. Property's located at 2726 West Omaha Street. Property's owned medium-density residential district. It's located in an established residential neighborhood located north of West Main. There's currently a single-family dwelling, shed, garage, workshop located on the property. Future land use is urban neighborhood. You can see West Chicago Street to the north is identified as a revitalization corridor and major street plan. It's located with West Chicago Street on the north side and then West Main Street on the south, both being identified as principal arterial streets. And this is a little residential neighborhood between those two. Here we have the site plan with the applicant's proposing to construct is an 18-by-25-foot carport. Just, this is the single-family dwelling, the shed existing, a workshop, an existing garage, and then this is the location of the carport. The proposed carport is located behind the front of the dwelling, which is, supports the comprehensive plan goal of de-emphasizing garages and carports. The reason this is a plan development is the applicant is requesting to waive the requirement to pave the first 50 feet of the driveway. The construction of a garage or a carport triggers in our parking ordinance that the driveway be constructed and paved for the first 50 feet. The reason for that is to prevent tracking of dirt, mud, or gravel into city public right-of-way. So as these come forward, hopefully, one at a time, we're getting them into compliance. However, the applicant is requesting that that requirement be waived, and for the reasons I noted, staff is recommending that that exception be denied. Here we have some applicant photos showing the existing dwelling, the shed, and the property, including that driveway. Looking at the backside of the property, the existing garage and workshop. Here's staff photos, the signs posted on the property. There you can get a better view of that driveway in wet weather. And looking at adjacent property to the west, and looking towards the east, and along the street to the east. There are, you know, the applicant has noted that there are other properties in the area which also do not have paved driveways. However, you know, some of these newer apartments do have paved driveways, looking directly across the street and west along the street that they're on. The reason this is an oversized garage is because the, with the carport and all the existing garage, shed, and workshop, the total size exceeds the footprint of the dwelling. So it doesn't go beyond the 1,500 square feet, which is what we usually look at. However, the total is larger than the footprint of the dwelling. Staff is recommending that the conditional use permit side of this be approved for the oversized garage as it's a carport and meets our requirements to be located behind the house to de-emphasize accessory structures. But staff is recommending that the exception to waive the requirement to pave the first 50 feet of the driveway be denied. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Thanks, Fletcher. I don't have any requests up, don't have any speaker requests on this one either. Are there, oh, Justin?
Yeah, have any alternatives been looked at to mitigate the trackout that, considering that's the biggest concern outside of actually paving it?
No, I don't know that there are any alternatives other than paving, but I would put that question to Ted Johnson of the Public Works Department.
Thank you. As far as I know, no. This is only looked at paving. Our criteria has some allowances for paving or concrete asphalt. There's a couple of alternatives for hard surfacing, but as far as I know, there's been no discussion of any alternative surfacing that meets the impervious or the pavement requirements in our criteria. Then that's actually acceptable, that actually works.
Galen?
Thank you. Looks like there's already a garage back there, so is that driveway legal non-conforming or what's kind of the status of the driveway as it stands?
Yes, it's legal non-conforming. As I noted, the construction of a garage or a carport triggers that the driveway be paved.
Okay, thanks.
Rachel?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know this is kind of unusual, but we approved item number six, which was, that came with an unpaved driveway, I believe. Is that, no, was that paved? I thought that was gravel. That was paved after, okay, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we weren't misapplying things, you know, to one group but not to another. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Further questions, comments from the commission? Look for a motion then. Anybody want to? Karen made the motion to approve with the staff stipulations. Is there a second for that motion? Rachel seconded that motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Fletcher.
I believe the applicant is in the audience and would like to speak.
Mr. Brand, if you could use the microphone just for meeting minute purposes.
I'd just like to say that if, you know, by me putting a 50-foot driveway in, it would be 50 feet from my carport, which has nothing to do with my carport. But not only that, I'd be the only house in a three-block area that had a concrete driveway. And, you know, when I applied for this building permit, I was told that if I tore down two sheds, that everything would be okay. And so I tore down those two sheds, and then they said, "Well, you know, you're going to have to put concrete underneath of your carport." I said, "All right, I'll do that." And then, then I said, "Okay, I'd like to get my building permit." And then they said, "Well, now you know you're going to have to put 50 feet of driveway in." And I said, "Well, if you'd have told me all this, I wouldn't have tore down my sheds," you know? But, you know, it's a low income. I mean, I supply housing for low income, and by having to put a 50-foot driveway, I'm going to have to put the cost onto the renters. And I just don't see a purpose in, you know, the reason we're trying to put a carport is because you seen he has a Lincoln pickup, a nice pickup, and we're trying to get, keep the cement dust off of it. And I just, that's my reasoning, and I just feel like I got the big runaround with this whole thing, you know? And I really would like to put that carport up, you know, with some consideration from you all.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Appreciate it. Galen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm kind of leaning towards not requiring the concrete myself, just because like, what the applicant just said, the 50 feet doesn't reach to the carport, so you're not really achieving the purpose of having that rule when, you know, they can put the 50 feet down just to comply, but there's, there's still be tracking or anything like that. So is there any alternative stipulations regarding like a gravel driveway? Can we require that there's a rock surface and so it doesn't go to dirt, I guess is the biggest concern? Because I think if you maintain a nice gravel or rock driveway, it's, you're going to keep the tracking off.
Mr. Chair?
Vicki.
So certainly, you could grant the exception not to pave the first 50 feet of the driveway with the contingency that it be gravelled instead. You could, I wouldn't encourage you to go beyond that 50-foot requirement even for the gravel. The parking regulations identifies that that 50 feet is required based on engineering data that shows that the 50 feet typically will get the mud off the tires as it then, they then back into the right-of-way. But you would have that option.
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support this, the motion as it stands, and I appreciate the concern and the efforts that the applicant has gone through, and I sympathize with the confusion that he had, and I don't know how to fix that. It's kind of done, but maybe that's something down the road that can be more clarified for other people, that he won't have, other people won't have to go through that issue. The 50 feet is to keep the tracking from getting on our streets, and although those other places do not have, you know, they don't all have that paved surface, I think it's important that we don't make sure, we make sure we don't set a precedent that says, "Okay, for this home, you don't have to pave it, but for all the other ones, you do." And that's, that really hurts in the future for other property owners and for the city as far as the dust control and stuff through our city. So I still support the motion as it stands. I think it's the correct one, so, thank you.
Getting back to the alternatives of paving, is there definitions? Does like using millings, asphalt millings count as paving? Ted?
Thank you. No, millings does not, does not meet the impervious pavement. It's impermeable, it does ravel, it does create dust. There's also some more recent analysis that rainwater going through the millings and the moving actually contributes to groundwater pollution because it'll leach out material, the oils and stuff out of the asphalt milling. So I don't know if that's 100% correct or how critical that is, but that is some of the recent analysis, so. But millings would be considered similar to rock, and it depends on the millings, they're so inconsistent, they may be better or worse at than rock as far as dust and far as the stability and other considerations.
Okay, well, I've got a driveway that I use recycled asphalt millings, and it's almost like pavement. I mean, it's, it's hard and nothing goes through it, the rainwater runs off it, whether it's leaching into the groundwater, I have a hard time believing that happens, but to me, it's, you know, I don't know where I'm going with this, but it just seems like it should be an approved exception, but that's all I have.
Thanks, Kurt. So we have a motion on the floor is to approve this item per the staff stipulations, which conclude the denial of waiving a requirement to pave the driveway. So the motion requires the pavement of 50 feet of driveway. Are there further discussion, questions on this motion?
Mr. Brand?
I'd like to say that the first 50 feet already is gravelled, and if it isn't approved, it will still be gravelled. You know, it isn't going to, you're not going to gain anything by not letting me have it. I mean, it isn't going to cause dust from not happening because I'm certainly not going to pave it if, you know, if this don't get approved. It's already got gravel on it. You know, and if I should not get this, somebody should have to pay me for tearing down my sheds that they told me to tear down and, you know, I just, I just feel like I'm getting ram-roaded here. But, hey, it's your decision, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. I apologize for that feeling. We don't have a lot of control on what happens before we see this, unfortunately, but, Rachel?
I want to make sure everything's clarified. No, we're talking about 50 feet, the first 50 feet from the road, not the first 50 feet from the carport. Okay, from the way the applicant was speaking, I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that, that it's, you know, the whole point is that gravel drops off as you're approaching the street and so the, you know, could it be, could it be asphalt or, okay, so it could be asphalt, too, which is a cheaper alternative to concrete, so. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everyone.
Back to no lights up. Motion's on the floor. Without any other further comment, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion carries with Kurt voting no. The motion carries with Kurt voting no. Item number 10.
Item number 10 is 17RZ025, a rezoning request from Park Forest District to the low-density residential district. This item was continued from the August 24th Planning Commission meeting to this date to allow the applicant to submit a final plan development overlay, addressing concerns of the proposed development based on topographic reasons, concerns drainage, soil stability, and proposed density. The applicant has not, has indicated they are not going to be submitting a final plan development overlay, but let me get you refreshed on property location. South of Indiana Street, currently zoned, Park Forest, surrounding is zone low-density, currently undeveloped. Future land use is actually forest conservation. I'll give you an idea of where in the city is located. This was the layout that the applicant initially submitted. However, they did indicate that they would, it would be fewer dwellings than, than what this shows. But based on this, there were concerns raised by the neighbors regarding, as I stated, the drainage, soil stability, and increasing the density. Photo looking into the property, you can see what the topographic concerns would be, and this would be where the street from, would access that development from East Indiana Street. So this is looking to the south, along East Indiana Street to the west, middle school located to the north, and East Indiana Street to the east. And this is looking from the top of the hill, looking out over the city. You can see why this would be a location to build a few homes with those views. I'm looking, there would be no access proposed from this top-of-the-hill area to the south. So if the Planning Commission determines that the proposed rezoning request cannot be supported without a final plan development overlay, which was the reason why this was continued out, then the rezoning request, we'll leave it up to you whether it should be approved or denied. Are there any questions for staff?
Thanks, Fletcher. Mike?
Fletcher, did they give any reason for not wanting to go further, or is it because of cost, or, okay. Well, I, I think that we have concerns. I think we have addressed that we want to do the infills in the city and get these spots where we have housing, where it's available. In this particular case, though, I, I think there's concerns about the, the land, and I, for one, will be voting to deny this. So as far as, I, I don't think that they should, we should rezon, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicki.
I believe the applicant's consultant, KTM, is in the audience. You may want to hear from them.
Sounds good. We do have several speaker requests on this item as well. If there are no more questions for Fletcher, I'll run through those. First one I have here is from David Butler.
Good morning. I'm David Butler, 2932 Country Club Drive. I am representing McGuire Services, who are the owner of the property. To answer your concern, Mr. Kozni, that's exactly it. You've got a piece of property right now that has very little value. In order to do the final plan overlay, the costs are between $70,000 and $110,000. If they sell the property, it's, the value's roughly $100,000. The value is in the development. Currently, you're allowed to have three homes, the way it's, it's zoned. It's not feasible to develop it with three homes, so they've tried to increase the density in order to have it developed. Even then, the preliminary bids from Quinn Construction are somewhere between $690,000 and $790,000 to develop it. So even at the 14 lots, I don't know if it's gonna be feasible to do, but right now, it, it just isn't feasible to do that. I've read the concerns from the homeowners in the neighborhood, and I think this would actually address some of those concerns because city code is gonna require an environmental impact study and geo-study to tell us what that hillside's doing. So you would have, still have control on approving building permits for that particular area. And then the other side for the city is the increase right now, it's $700 a year in taxes, the, you know, bring in $50,000 to $60,000 a year in tax revenue beyond that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Butler, since we have him up? I don't have, oh, Kurt?
How long ago did you purchase the property?
It's been in the McGuire family for 40 years.
For how many?
About 40 years.
Forty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I think that's all we have at this point. David Strand?
Good morning. My concerns, I represent Faith Lutheran Church and my daughter, who lives at 2514 Grandview at the top of the hill. And basically, it sounds like the concerns have been voiced and needs to come under consideration, but we spent about three years of Faith Lutheran trying to get the hills stabilized above us because every time it rained hard, we had a flood of mud in the driveway. We had to scoop out with wheelbarrows and shovels. So we're definitely concerned about what's gonna transpire, the integrity of the hillside, that sort of thing. So it sounds like that's already being addressed. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mike Pennell?
Good morning. I live at 129, I shouldn't say I live there. I own 129 East Indiana. My former fiance's son lives there, so he's kind of like my stepson. We purchased the house with intent to move into town. I live out in the valley, and he needed a place to go, so we let him move in there while we were fixing it. My house is the only one on the street with a basement. Every other house on that street is a slab house. When I purchased the home, I purchased it inexpensively because the foundation had issues. The basement wall was bowed in. I have spent thousands of dollars to alleviate this problem, but I know what's gonna happen if they build up behind us again. You know, that, we already have issues with water runoff from that. If you take away all that vegetation that is up there, we're gonna get a ton more drainage. I know they're, they're doing the impact studies and this, but it just seems like no matter what we do, it's, it's, it's not enough. I'm in construction. That's what I do, heating and air, and, and I'm on these job sites all the time, and I see the muck and the mud that comes through the neighborhood, you know, from building it, and the disturbance to the people around it. But I also see that Indiana Street is a very, very busy place with the school there. That traffic in the morning, there's times I couldn't even get in my own driveway because people were parked in it, and I live just down the street from the school, where the old swimming pool used to be. I'm just concerned about traffic coming down the street. I'm concerned about the erosion that we're gonna have, the water damage that I'm gonna get. I'm also concerned about the fire danger up there. And what I mean by that is, you put 14 houses in there, and you've got a cul-de-sac. What happens when there's a fire on one of those houses? Or that narrow roadway coming through, if there's a structure fire, people can't get out of there. One way in and one way out is never a good idea. And I guess the other thing I have is property values. You guys all, like he said, "Well, we're gonna increase property taxes revenue by $50,000." It's gonna be more than that, because as soon as they put those higher-income houses in there because of the view, my property taxes are gonna go up on my property because you're gonna come around and tell me, "My house is worth more now." You know, you can't tell me it hasn't happened because it's already happened to me once before. I just have a lot of concerns with them building up behind us. You know, that's forested, now there's animals that live in there. There's vegetation already grown. I understand it's been in their family many, many years, you know, but most of people, most of my neighbors have lived in that neighborhood many years. There's like 45 homes surrounding it, and I don't think there's any one of us that would like it there. And I know if it was happening in your neighborhood, you wouldn't want it there. The soil is shale. Everything shifts. It's, it's just a mess. And I'm just concerned for what happens to my property now after you, you guys will approve this, and they start building. I understand it's probably not an economical thing, but the way they make more money is they just build a fancier house. So I, I would hope that you guys would just really think about this. If, if you have concerns, drive out and look at the side of the hill. Park on Indiana Street, 129, walk in my backyard and go, "Wow, this is not good," you know? But that's my concerns, the, the fire, the taxes, the erosion, and the traffic. So, thank you.
Thanks. I would argue that it's the county that raises taxes, not us.
All right.
Last request is from Lois, and I apologize. I, I'm gonna, we'll call it Lois C. Maybe you can explain your last name for me.
Well, first of all, my, my last name is Sir Sosamo, and I think I might know a couple of people on here. But anyhow, I was, was not here for the meeting in August because I was in Denmark, I think. So when I got back, I, I realized that I missed it. So I don't really know that much about the plans for, for like, getting up there. And I own the house on 3 Indiana Street, which you saw in the video earlier. You saw the, the side of my garage where the easement is that goes up the hill. And I bought the house on my father's recommendation in 1970, and so I've had it for a long time. I've actually never lived there, but rented it out all the time with good renters, usually staying for two or three years. But anyway, or longer. I'm wondering how they plan on getting the traffic in, or getting up to the houses. Can someone tell me that?
Fletcher, maybe you could...
Since I wasn't here.
Pull up that proposed map or plan.
So the access, this is East Indiana Street, and there is public right-of-way here between the two houses, so it'd be coming up there and cul-de-sacking like that. This was the layout that, that was submitted with the rezoning, but the applicant's indicated it's more units than what they think they could probably do.
So now you're telling me that now my house is on a corner lot, right? They're gonna put a street in there?
That would be the effect, yep.
You know, I've dealt with that easement for many, many years, usually calling the city to come and mow it every summer because it'd be growing and growing and growing. And, and even one year when a young fellow was painting the garage, there was a rattlesnake right next to the, to the garage. But, but anyway, I, I just, I don't, I've never heard of putting in a street in the middle of a block. And I was told that the easement was there because of fire in case they had to get up the hill, or for other kinds of city utility kind of work, or whatever, I don't know. But I'm also concerned, really, I was an educator for many years. I'm concerned about the traffic and the students and that's, that aspect of it. In the morning and after school, you're lucky to even get in the driveway. And it isn't just school either. All, every, almost every weekend in the wintertime, that new gym at South Middle School has activities going on, and there's traffic all over the place. And so I was a little concerned about that. And of course, I'm concerned that the land is not very steady. I've, we've already had cracks in the garage. In fact, I took the garage floor out because it had so many cracks in it. And, and of course, I'm concerned about draining too. Although I've never experienced any problem, we've never had any problems with that. My house is on a slab, so that takes care of that. And, and I guess there's nothing else I really want to say, except that I'm concerned with all the construction and all the things going in on that small easement, that it's gonna be kind of a mess. And besides that, I, I don't think it will help the value of my house any, but we'll have to put up with a lot of construction and, and traffic and that sort of thing. So that's kind of what I have to say.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, I think one of the, the folks, I think David Strand, had some questions about drainage, slope stability, and also erosion control during the construction process. I was wondering, Ted, if you had any comments on that?
Thank you. We did look at some, we looked at all those when we considered this request. Those are concerns. Those are concerns with any construction site. They would have to meet city requirements. It's a flat plan. You know, we talked about getting utilities there. I guess, in general, I would refer, or refer you to the consultant to provide any more details on what their exact plans are, considerations are. But it is a hill. There would be concerns, or they would need to provide erosion control, soil stabilization, geotech. The same as any other site. The, the requirements are the same. The details and extent of the work depends on the site, site-specific. So they would need to meet those.
Mr. Butler, would you be able to address some of those concerns, please?
Again, I think if, if you could bring that up, Fletcher, if you look, if you look at the, the way that the plat is, the open areas there, that's where the hillside is on Grandview. So if you look at the houses, there's nothing that's built towards the hillside. It's more towards Indiana Street. It's 10 acres there, and we're putting a proposed 12 to 14 homes over 10 acres. Again, all the geo-studies will have to be done. All the drainage studies will have to be done. And currently, it can be developed for three homes. I mean, it's already zoned that way. So all, all that the Maguires are asking for is, is an increased density to make it feasible to do that. It's great that, that the, the neighborhood has a 10-acre park that they don't have to pay for or maintain, but the Maguires are the ones that have to maintain that every year. They have to do that type of work. I understand why the homeowners don't want it, but for the Maguires to make it feasible to be able to sell, because the way it's zoned right now, it, I mean, it currently is, has no value. It's a park that is just growing up grass. So it can be developed now if somebody wants to come in and do it. You know, property values, yeah, there's gonna have to probably be some higher-valued homes in the 250 to 270 range, which will increase the value of the other homes, absolutely, which is a concern for the neighborhood. But all of the city codes are gonna have to be provided. Building permits, you would still have the option to not approve building permits if you didn't like what was going on. I guess I just don't, I don't see a reason why it shouldn't at least move forward to be able to evaluate whether it's something that can be done. But that can't be done until it's rezoned, because you can't spend, you know, $70,000 to $110,000 to do the studies.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Vince?
Yes, I have a question. Can we keep that slide up, please? Can you explain a couple of things to me? The drainage lot and the detention pond, are those, what's currently there right now?
There's nothing there.
So nothing is actually forcing any kind of drainage to go into that area?
Right.
So if that was there, it would direct more drainage to that area then? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Galen?
Thank you. As the applicant mentioned, this is basically a free public park for the last 40 years, so that is kind of an interesting dynamic here. But I, I just don't think this is going to have any chance unless it's in a, in a planned development situation. So, you know, there's, and that's what we asked for the first time, was to get, you know, show some, show some concessions on maybe lowering the number of houses or, or some more details on this. I, I just don't think it's gonna, you know, we're not gonna be able to just pass a rezon, at least from this board, at all. I will, you know, remind everybody that our options are, if we deny, this can be appealed to the council. So then, I'm assuming either way, this will likely be appealed, and the council will hear this again. It would be what I, what I would foresee. So I don't think we're, at least I'm not in favor of rezoning this without having it in planned development.
Thanks, Galen. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I tend to agree with what Galen is saying. I think the issue is, this is actually a beautiful place to put a house. I mean, the views would be excellent, and, and I can understand the... I mean, the views would be excellent, and, and I can understand the Maguires wanting to do something with the property. I also understand the cost. And I, I know when we voted on this at the last meeting, part of the reason was that we needed to feel more in, information that would help us in making that decision. And we also knew that the cost would be high. So, it, it's a, you know, it's a difficult situation for the, the property owners. And I, I, I understand that. I think for me, knowing a little bit more about the stability of that land and how to counteract that, how to address, uh, the drainage issues that could happen in the future, or help the drainage issues for the homeowners down below, would be helpful for me to make that decision. Uh, at this point, it's difficult for me to say, go ahead and, and put however many homes you want to put up there, 12 or 14, whatever your final decision is, without more information to make a, a good, valid judgment on the stability of that property. Um, it, it, it's not fair for the property owner to, to have a park for people or s- it, I think the people who live around there want that to stay the same way. And anybody who would have that ability next to their home would agree with that. I, I, I don't disagree. I know we've got development in my neighborhood, and I don't, I hate to see it because the open spaces are so nice. But, I, one of the suggestions I had before was that if all the property owners could get together and purchase that property, they could have a, their own backyard. But that's a, that's an expense for somebody who maybe doesn't want to put out that kind of money too. So, it, it's a difficult decision, but without a little bit more information, and I wish there was a way that you could bring some more information to us, um, that wouldn't cost the $100,000 tag, but I don't know what that would be. So, um, my, my thoughts at this point are, it, it is difficult. And I think the council will probably end up seeing this one way or the other too. So, thank you.
Vicky?
So just a couple of points of clarity. We've heard, uh, the street extending from Indiana referenced as an easement. And just so the audience knows, that, that is a public right-of-way. And it was dedicated as right-of-way at the same time as those adjacent lots were. It was secured to ensure access to the null of this hill. So extending the street up this hill would be reasonable. And I would assume, even if they someday do just three lots, that would be the point of access. Uh, we also heard some discussion about, uh, the number of units on a dead-end street. In our infrastructure design criteria manual, we have some good limitations on what that would include. It could not exceed 20 dwelling units. There's the length of the cul-de-sac that we would also look at once we did get a final concept of what that would be. Slopes would also be analyzed as a part of what the grade is on those streets. Uh, the fire department would have an opportunity to weigh in on that. If there were any exceptions being requested for any of those design standards, it would require, uh, most likely that fire suppression systems be implemented in those homes so that we can go to that fire protection that this neighborhood has mentioned. Uh, as a reminder, we had brought this to you a month ago with the recommendation that if you are to rezone it, do so with the planned development designation. We noted in the report the concerns that the neighborhood has also shared regarding erosion and drainage, um, and looking at what kind of traffic this could potentially generate, ensuring that there's enough on-street parking for these homes that they don't add to what's going on down on Indiana Street right now. At that meeting, we had, uh, property owners in the area show up that voiced additional concerns as to what that information would look like when it came in. You made the recommendation to continue this item. You wanted to see a final planned development. You wanted to see full construction plans. Uh, the applicant, as you, as noted today, said that that is cost-prohibitive to do without some assurance that the rezone is gonna go one way or the other. Your options today, and, and just as a reminder, this automatically goes to council. You just make a recommendation. Council actually makes the final decision on this. They will hear it at two readings. Your options today would be to deny it, to approve it with a planned development designation, whereas a final PD would then have to be submitted notifying the neighborhood. You would have an opportunity to look at those components of what that would look like, and vote yes or no as to whether or not that final planned development was appropriate based on, uh, whether or not it meant the concerns as we've discussed today. Uh, or you could approve it just with a planned development, or, excuse me, or you could approve it again with the requirement that a final planned development be submitted, um, as it goes forward to council. There's different things that we could look at here. Uh, based on the conversation that I've heard so far, since the final planned development hasn't been submitted, uh, your motion maker may want to indicate to deny. Uh, or you go back to attaching that PDD, or continue again, waiting for a final planned development to be submitted for you to look at. Several options.
Good to think about, Vicky. Uh, Justin?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess my, my comments would be, um, in general, I, I, I'm okay with something like this. However, I think the, the concerns of the residents are, are very valid. Um, in theory, you know, the concerns of erosion control and drainage and everything during construction should be mitigated by the developer and the contractor. Maybe that doesn't always happen, but in theory, that's how it should happen. The city should hold them to that. So, the concerns with the basement and more water and stuff, that, again, should not happen during construction. Um, the concern is still valid, absolutely. I view the home value thing a little differently. If, if my home value goes up, I actually like that, I guess, um, even though it has more taxes. Um, but I would say, I guess, uh, one question for, for the city maybe is, is on the storm sewer piece. It seems like we're gonna be increasing a lot of flow. So is, is, is the storm sewer system in, in Indiana sized to account for that? Or, or how is that gonna be addressed? Because having to get into Indiana and do a lot of improvements would probably be a pretty big undertaking.
Thank you. Um, the applicant is showing onsite detention because there is no storm sewer in Indiana, adjacent to this property. It would need to be extended within Indiana to the east, a substantial dis- distance to tie into existing storm sewer. Um, it's a couple blocks over to the east. So it would take quite a bit of pipe and installation within the right-of-way or the street. Um, I'm sure that the onsite is a, is a less expensive alternative. Although there is storm sewer that is in the area, they wouldn't have to build it for miles, but for, it would be a couple blocks, I think. But it would still be a substantial expense to do that.
So the plan is all onsite detention with that pond?
Their concept plan.
Okay.
But shows that they're gonna detain onsite and re- and release at historic levels.
So I guess my, my comment would be, um, again, all these things need to be mitigated for the concerns, the traffic during construction, you know, again, what's the school there? All that stuff should be the developers and contractors to mitigate as it's getting developed. Um, I would say, looking at the plan, um, at this point, maybe there's some options to look at to give some concessions back for some open spaces, things like that. Maybe it's not 14 lots, I think Galen kind of alluded to it, maybe it's 11. I, I don't know what the number is, but, um, because again, in general, I, I would generally support something like this. But is there a way to kind of find a balance between where we're at with three lots and going to 14 that would help the, the, the neighbors feel better about it, yet allow, uh, the Maguires to do what they want to do with their property? So that would be my, my comment, I guess.
Thanks, Justin. Galen?
Yeah, and that's what we wanted to see, I think, uh, for the last meeting was, show us exactly what, how many lots, or how many, you know, where the houses would be placed, and that would be able to stimulate some discussion with, with the neighborhood and figure out if this is a good plan. So, I, I think my, I'm gonna make a motion that we just deny this. Uh, uh, just because we, we've already tried to ask for a planned development and didn't see it. So I don't think we're gonna see it if we ask for it again. So, my motion is to deny the rezone.
Galen made the motion to deny the rezone. Is there a second for that motion? Karen, second of the motion? Uh, further discussion, Rachel?
Yeah, I was looking at, um, at the drainage, and, and I understand, you know, you're keeping drainage at, at historic levels. So there shouldn't be any, uh, more drainage off the property as a whole than there was previously. Um, but I noticed with the detention ponds and, and the fact that it's, um, it sounds like it's shale, something that really retains water. I wonder if that would cause, um, you know, some of the other homes around that area would have fewer problems with water, but it would actually concentrate the water to the neighbors who are around that detention pond and that irrigation ditch. So I just wanted that, in case if this goes into the city council, if it gets appealed, I just wanted to point that out, that that's kind of a concern of mine too. But I'm gonna vote to deny this as well. Even though it's a really tricky situation, because you do want property owners to be able to use and sell their property. Um, I'm still gonna deny it.
Thanks, Rachel. Uh, Karen?
Thank you. Um, my question, I guess, is for staff. If, if the, uh, rezone is denied also at city council, if they feel that it needs more information or whatever, the applicant could reapply to have that done sometime in the future with something different that maybe we could look at? That's kind of my question, I guess. I, I, I feel like the property, even if they decide to go with three homes up there like it should be, and they put that in there, the construction, all that information is going to, it's gonna be the same, whether they put three homes or 14 homes. Um, and I think for, like I said before, I think for us, it's, it's the difficulty of seeing what's there and, and feeling assured that, that shale is not gonna cause more disruption to the neighbors. And I, and I think that's the issue for us, really. It's, it's the drainage, to me, anyway, I guess. It's, it's the drainage issues, it's the shale shifting. And, and I know there's other places in town that have the same issues. This, this is not the only hu- uh, piece of property that has shale. But, uh, it is fairly steep, and it is very congested through that area. And that makes us a little nervous about saying this is just gonna be fine, I guess. But the question is, can they reapply if they choose to do so, if the council should deny it?
Yes, they could reapply for a rezone. They could also submit a plat to create densities that would be supported by the current zoning. That requires no notification or publication, that would just be a staff review.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicky. John, your name keeps showing up and then disappearing. Oh, Mike?
I, I think there's been some good arguments, and I think that the, the residents need to know that there is the possibility that this, if at some point it does become developed, it could take care of some of the problems. And I think that's important, that as we go forward and we plan, that we look at what we can do to take care of. I'm still gonna vote probably to deny, because I think we needed more information. But I think it's important that we take care of those neighborhoods and understand that, yeah, it's great to have a park behind, but I've had homes where they built behind me, and I wish they wouldn't have. But it's part of the real life, is it's gonna happen at some point. Um, keep an open mind as you go forward. If, if something does happen, that maybe there's a, a way to fix some of the problems that you have now. And, and I think that's important that we, as we go forward and plan, that we look at that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. John?
Thank you very much. I hope the, the commissioner can give me a little bit of leeway and let me speak on this for a second, if you would. But, uh, I find the conversation here very interesting. Um, you know, going forward on this and asking them before, you know, the zoning, to put a planned unit development on it, no developer in their right mind's gonna do that. You're not gonna go out, you're not gonna spend these kind of funds, not knowing whether or not you can even do the project in the future, whether it falls within staff criteria or not. Because if you haven't done the zoning yet, or we haven't done the zoning yet on the council, it can come in and everything can be okay as far as the development side and the engineering side, but we could still say, no. So why would they take the risk of outlaying that money, especially on a project like this where there's a tremendous amount of risk and very, very little return on it? I mean, 14 lots, you know, we, I worked with somebody recently, we did seven lots, and there is very, very, very little profit in that. Mostly, it's just infrastructure costs. So, when you get lower and lower in this density, and I know it sounds like a lot of density, but you know, 14, 12 homes on 10 acres is large lots. They're very large lots nowadays. You know, you look at the affordable housing that we're talking about, and we're trying to get homes down to 4,000, you know, or lots down to 4,000 square foot, you know, that's less than a tenth of an acre. You're looking at 14 homes on 10 acres. These are huge lots. Going forward on this, whether they have the zoning or not, if they don't have the zoning and they don't get it through the council, they're not gonna go forward on this project. They're not gonna spend the, the money on this project. All that we're allowing them with the zoning is the opportunity to go forward. The engineering, the drainage, what city staff has to say on their end is gonna dictate whether or not this project goes forward. You know, we as, as a city, and, and hopefully as staff, if they go in and they do their, their soils work, and it says that this hill is unstable to build on, we're not gonna allow them to build on it. But that is gonna be, you know, it doesn't matter if they have the zoning or, or, or not on that. That's gonna be a truth of the matter. So, but, all we're doing, giving them zoning, is allowing them to go forward, which we typically do. These conversations typically don't even happen in the planning commission when you're talking about zoning. I mean, you're, you've got the cart so far ahead of the horse that it's just, it's, it's very interesting. And I think it's gonna be a very interesting conversation on the council, because I can see that this is gonna be denied today. I think you're setting a very poor precedent, because we're always talking about infill in Rapid City, and we're not even giving this developer the opportunity to go in and take the risk on pop- properly, or possibly infilling this property. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that I, I really, really believe this is a poor precedent being set by the planning commission in this case. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Karen? We still have a motion on the floor.
Okay. Thank you.
Too far afield.
I, I just wanted to make a, a comment, partially on John's comments also. Um, I, I think that this isn't the first time when we've discussed a zoning request. I know there was one out north of town on, on an industrial site, that we had a lot of concern about how that was gonna go forward. And I, and I think, partially, you're right. We are requesting them to do something that we don't normally do for a zoning a, uh, action by requesting that they have this planned development come through. Typically, when you do a zoning, they say, we wanna put houses here, or we wanna do this there. But we don't ask for a master plan, we don't, you know, ask for all the details that we, we are requesting. But I also think that this is a unique piece of property that gives us cause to think about how it's gonna be in the future, if it is rezoned. But going forward to the plan, to the city council, I think that will give the applicant an idea of how the city council feels about this. And that might also give them the opportunity to say, yes, we wanna pursue this by doing something different, coming through with a different layout plan for us to see, or, or whatever. But I think that the council's decision will give them an idea of whether this is a good opportunity for them or not. And so, whether we approve it or, or not, I, I think, I think the end result will be the same. So, I still think that, for me, I need a little bit more information. It doesn't have to be perfect, but I need something. And so I'm sticking with the motion that, that will be at hand.
Uh, Kurt?
Sorry, John, I couldn't have you take the last word. Uh, because I, I, I do take exception to saying that we're setting a bad precedence. Um, I think that just because we have a process that property can be rezoned, doesn't mean we have to rezone everything that comes up. Uh, I don't think this is a proper place to, to do what he wants to do. That, that they've owned the property for 40 years. I imagine, I, I don't know when the zoning came up, came about there. Uh, chances are, it was less than 40 years ago. They had the opportunity at that time to, to weigh in on the, on the zoning as it was being set. And, I guess my comment is, just because it can be rezoned through the process doesn't necessarily mean it's the right thing to do. That's all I got.
Thanks, Kurt. Uh, Rachel, let's try to keep it to the motion now, instead of general comments on zoning.
You know, I, I, I agree with what Kurt said. You know, it, it, this is something that the property owner can still do some. We're not prohibiting anyone from actually building on this property. Now, it might, it might be cost prohibitive to, um, build only three, you know, three homes on this property. property, but it also might be cost prohibitive to build eleven homes, as I think we discussed in the last planning commission. I mean, we honestly don't know if anything can be done with this land. But, I just wanted to encourage, you know, all the people who've come today to keep involved, because I think we're gonna see this in city council, and I think it's incredibly important to be able to come and speak your minds, and it makes a huge difference, you know, sitting up here, seeing you guys there, and seeing how this, you know, what this means to you. So, sorry to, you know, go on too long, but I just wanted to make sure they knew that.
Thanks, Rachel. The motion on the floor is to deny the rezoning request. Yeah, Vicky?
So, to the motion maker, there is specific criteria set forward by ordinance that mandates whether or not a rezon should be approved or denied. Within that criteria is a requirement that the applicant demonstrate that it will not adversely impact the neighborhood, and that it is in compliance with all the city's adopted plans. It would be my suggestion, if the motion maker feels that it does not meet that criteria, they base their motion on the lack of meeting those criteria.
Okay. The motion maker and the second agree to that, that this does not meet the city's criteria. So, one last chance, further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Let's do a roll call. No.
Bowman?
Aye.
Caesar?
Aye.
Galaher?
Aye.
Hargestrot?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Kwasny?
Aye.
Schmidt? Oh, pardon me. Van Graefeschi?
No.
Vadel?
No.
I have six, four, three against. Motion passes?
Motion carries. End of the regular agenda and discussion items for today.
Just one. You will have election of officers at the start of your next, or the end of your next meeting, excuse me, and you will be electing a president, a chair, a vice-chair, and a secretary. The duties of the secretary are to fill in as the chair if the chair and vice-chair can't attend, and sometimes that happens. So, if you feel like you are someone who would like to sit in that seat, talk amongst yourselves, and be ready to start nominating each other come next meeting. Thank you.
I encourage all candidates. Any further items today? Oh, Patsy, sorry.
I am here on behalf of the Tax Increment Financing Committee. We're looking for a couple volunteers that I can forward to the mayor's office as a replacement from Steve Rollinger. He was our representative on planning commission before. Generally, the committee meets at seven AM when there is an application, so you're only called when necessary. You don't have to come every two weeks. It does occur usually at seven AM. They last about an hour, hour and a half. So, if any of you would like to volunteer on that committee, I can forward your name, and then the mayor can send that through the approval process.
Any volunteers?
It's a great committee.
This is the best committee there is. I will say that.
They're usually Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, whenever the committee can get together.
Hour, hour and a half, depends on the discussion. Sometimes four, five minutes.
In speaking with John Herr yesterday, he indicated an interest to serve on that.
Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
Yeah.
At seven?
How do they?
It's usually consolidated, whenever we can get a quorum, that's the day that we meet.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you guys.
Maybe I'll just say Rachel and Patsy should talk quickly after the meeting. And any further volunteers, if you don't feel like doing it now, you can always call or email Patsy later this morning.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other business, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Rachel made the motion. Mike seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.